The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 26 Council meeting. We'll call a meeting to order. Under Presentations, we have none this evening. Adoption of the agenda. Could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Frank and Counselor Clark. Okay, next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on June 12? Thank you, Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Vroba. Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie. Okay, next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions. First of all, we have a request for a straight pride flag and Mom &amp; Dad Week proclamation. And tonight, we have the presenter, Miles Victor. Good evening, everyone. Miles, please take it away.
Good evening, council members. So I have a brief statement I'd like to read in lieu of council's decision to deny our concerned citizens' members' request for a straight pride flag to be raised by the city, as well as a few questions for council in light of this issue. So Concerned Citizens finds this denial extremely disturbing. In lieu of the city of Estevan currently hosting and a similar type of event with a contrasting view being promoted on Discover Estevan titled "Celebrate Pride Month" with Estevan Public Library. The city has been engaging in this promotion and expanding it for some time. I'm uncertain of this present year, but in past, it has been in coordination with an outside organization targeting Estevan named Moose Jaw Pride, also known as the Saskatchewan Pride Network, beginning in 2016. As their website states, "The Saskatchewan Pride Network is currently working with community leaders and volunteers to provide community events in seven target communities including Swift Current, Moose Jaw, Wayburn, Estevan, Yorkton, Prince Albert, and Humboldt." So in 2016, it began with a flag-raising event and a proclamation on June 27 in coordination with Moose Jaw Pride Executive Director Joe Wickenhauser. In 2017, it was expanded to a week-long Gender Diversity Awareness Week in the Estevan Art Gallery, hosted at the Estevan Art Gallery. In 2018, there was a Pride Week flag-raising, including speech from Moose Jaw Pride's Joe Wickenhauser, who attended to help coordinate the event. In 2019, the pride flag was raised again, and an opening ceremony speech from Saskatchewan Pride Network's Laura Budd, seen in this photo in the back. Skip forward to where we are presently. Again, this promotion has been expanded to now Pride Month with the Estevan Public Library, as indicated on Discover Estevan, shown here on this article. The Saskatchewan Pride Network states its mission of pride as follows: "To celebrate and support gender and sexually diverse people through the provision of fabulously inclusive community services and educational opportunities." Diversity and inclusivity, as they say. Concerned Citizens fully supports the concept of pride inclusivity, which is essentially enshrouded by the Canadian Charter. The public promotion of sexual diversity by the city of Estevan, however, we do not. This can and often does by nature provide a setting violating the constitutional right of parents to raise and educate their own children. These rights include parents knowing where their childrens are, who has access to them, and what materials they're exposed to, and whether or not they're safe. As an example, one of our members has a child that attends the Hillcrest School. The child received a school-sponsored invitation to a free pizza and bowling event under the guise of anti-bowling, diversity, and inclusion. Unaware of these new meaning of these words, they were horrified when their child came home and explained how they were exposed to pride sexual diversity symbols in literature at the event. Concerned Citizens does not understand council's decision to deny a symbol of straight pride representing the worldview of over 90% of the citizenry, at the same time hosting a library event promoting symbols of sexual diversity. That's not very inclusive and diverse. In reflection of the dichotomy between these two views, Concerned Citizens feels the best resolve is the city disengage from promoting any symbols and messaging regarding any sexual morals. It's simply not the business of the city, and you can't give a pass to pushing a sexual diverse... symbols and messaging... Sorry. Let me start that. It's simply not the business of the city, and you can't give a pass to pushing a sexual diversity by claiming you're supporting inclusivity. It's no coincidence these two concepts are paired together in the same slogan. It's by design. In summary, Concerned Citizens respectfully asks council to immediately cease any ongoing or future planned events promoting literature symbols or other forms of messaging promoting diversity, also known as diversity sexuality. These events should be funded and promoted by the private interests that dispose of them, not the taxpayers. And with that statement, I have a few questions for city council that Concerned Citizens would like to be addressed. The city cites Policy 2023-81, Sections 3 and 4, as the broad reason for denying our request. Concerned Citizens would like to know from council specifically which words in this policy do they deem characterize Concerned Citizens' request? Number two, are any outside organizations such as Moose Jaw Pride or the Saskatchewan Pride Network, et cetera, partnering, coordinating with any members of council with these aforementioned pride promotional events, as the Moose Jaw Pride claims on their website? And number three, as Bill requested as we were coming in, we were interested to see a show of hands from council. Who voted our request down? On behalf of Concerned Citizens? Okay, sorry. On behalf of Concerned Citizens, we thank council for this opportunity to speak.
Okay. Thank you for that, Miles. We'll open the floor to council members. Counselor Ford?
Thank you so much, your worship. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I've actually written something out so that my message comes across loud and clear. Our flag and proclamation policy specifically states that flag-raising or proclamation requests will not be approved if it's considered controversial, contentious, or divisive within the community. It is my belief that flying the straight flag at City Hall will be all three of those things. In our country, people who are out or are still finding their place in the LGBTQ2S+ community is getting increasingly dangerous and scary. Our world seems to be moving backwards when it comes to being accepting to all people, no matter who they are. This year, Stats Canada reported that in 2020 and 2021, hate crimes targeting people based on their sexual orientation jumped up 64% more than previous years. This isn't talking about one or two more incidents. It's in the hundreds. People in the LGBTQ2S+ community are fearing for their safety and their lives because they're facing constant scrutiny for stereotypes that aren't even true, violence, and having to constantly fight for their rights to be treated like human beings. Your worship, it's my goal as a counselor to make this a safe community for everybody. It is the goal of various organizations that we support in the community, to make this town safe for all. Supporting this request would have taken some of that safety and inclusion away from some of the people who are still to this day fighting for their rights. The straight pride movement has been around for many years. In fact, it's something that communist Russia took quite seriously in flying the straight pride flag. There is some actual water over there if you'd like to have a drink.
I have a drink here.
Perfect, thank you. Russia took this quite seriously in flying the straight pride flag. It's not an example that we need to be following. The argument with the countrywide straight pride movement is that the straight pride supporters are saying that they feel as they're oppressed as those in the minorities. But I think the violence and hate crime statistics provided by Stats Canada could say otherwise. Rejecting this motion was not going to hurt or harm the Concerned Citizens group, but supporting it, your worship, had the potential to harm a group in our community who already has enough to battle and will give the impression that we're not a safe and inclusive community. Therefore, I am sticking by what the decision that we made, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Any other counselors would like to weigh in? Counselor Wolieser?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you for coming here tonight. Before I can address straight pride, I'd like to clarify what pride itself is. Pride, Pride Week, Pride Month, pride celebrates the achievements of the past, of earning the same basic human rights and freedoms that many of us, based on our heteronormative status, have always had and have taken for granted. Pride is an opportunity to highlight the disparity that continues to this day, the lack of access to secure housing, to healthcare, the prevalence of gender-based violence, and the ongoing acts of discrimination and hatred. This community remains underrepresented and marginalized at the decision-making table to this day. Pride is a fight for equality. Pride matters because I want to live in a world where everyone is safe to be who they are, where people have agency over their own lives and their loved ones can celebrate alongside them. Pride is important because it allows each individual the space to be comfortable with who they are. Pride is a celebration of diversity and the richness that diversity brings to our community. By its very nature, pride is for everyone, whether or not you self-identify as part of their community. Intentional inclusion and radical acceptance, reaching out to people who have been historically cast aside by mainstream culture and creating a sense of community together. Straight pride does not have a shared history of oppression or marginalization, nor does it have common aspirations for the future. Variations of the flag exist, and they have been used by groups who spread division and hatred. For these reasons, I cannot support this request for a straight pride flag or a proclamation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Wolieser. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, your worship. You know, I come from probably what would be the same type of group as you are, where we marginalized, we oppressed those people. It was okay to walk down the street and say bad things about the gay community and to make them uncomfortable to live in our community and have them move. I'm so glad that the next generation has accepted them and done that. For my generation, it's a long ways to go yet. I think we still see it as a negative in the community. Heterosexual people have ran this country for 150 years, 125 years, in the province in Canada, and we're out there going, you know, now things are bad in Estevan, and we want to come here and change Estevan. This isn't an Estevan issue. This is how we treated these people. We treated them awful, and now we need to say, you know what, today have their day. We've never had people come down and talk to us in a way that we've talked to them. You know, I can apologize for... I was part of that. I was part of mistreating minorities. You know, don't come and ask us. Go ask that group. You know, what have we done to you? Why are you like that? Go ask the Aboriginals why we took their kids away and did that stuff and put them into religious schools. Like, they're the people that are out there that are suffering. We're not suffering. We don't have an issue with this. This is just creating a divisive nature. It's like asking a grandmother, why your favorite grandson? And if you don't say the right answer, I'll go and make it, you know, I'll tell everybody in the family that you don't like me. You know, this is wrong. You know, let's accept that this is a great community. I was out at Rotary fundraising. I was at the thing at the Legion. Nobody was questioning this. This is something that I think we don't need in our community, and I really would like to request that you withdraw your application to do that, because we're not the people that are causing the trouble. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Clark.
Thank you, your worship. I honestly have thought long and hard. I didn't prepare anything because I wanted to come here with an open mind tonight. I wanted to try and see from your vision where you're coming from. Since you've gotten in here, I've seen hostility, and that's what I feel, and not from you, Miles, truthfully. I thank you for your presentation. But, Bill, you're hostile. I've seen hostile last meeting when I was at and I was to speak for a second, and I couldn't figure out how can somebody hate somebody they haven't even met? And I just still can't get it, and I can't understand how you think you can stand behind a straight pride flag and act like it's not filled with hatred, because I can see it in your smug look that you're staring at me and asking...
I have a gay son.
You know what?
I have a gay son.
Okay, let's keep...
So don't go there. I have a gay son.
Good for you, Bill. Good for you.
I didn't know that.
Oh, I did know that, actually, but that's okay. Oh, I did know that.
Okay, guys.
But you know what, Bill? At the end of the day, I could not see from your view.
I can't see from your view either.
You don't even know my view.
I sure as hell don't.
I have never even spoken to you about this, but I'll tell you right now, I cannot support this because of the hatred that I feel comes just actually specifically from you, Bill.
Don't let your politics get involved.
Politics has...
I don't let your weed get involved.
Politics has nothing to do with this. The fact, it oozes out of your skin. I can smell it from here. So truthfully, I will not support this.
Okay, well, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Okay, any other comments?
Liberals.
Counselor Frank?
I'll just address some of the questions that were asked in regards to are we partnering with pride? Every organization that you mentioned that is currently partnering with pride, the art gallery, the library are not, the city run, they are separate organizations. We don't have voting control over their boards. We give funding to them, but we can't control what they do with the funding. So in terms of those organizations, the library doing Pride Month, the city of Estevan has zero control to stop them from doing that. They've chosen to do that, and it is a nationally celebrated event, so they are welcome to do it.
So it's not funded by the city in any way?
The library gets funding from the city, but the city can't tell them what to do. That's not within our voting rights of the library.
You can tell them not what they can do?
No, we can't. Absolutely, we can't. And the library specifically has a library act, so I actually have no control over how much money I give the library. This is a national conversation.
The library is an independent entity from the city budget.
Yeah, you see, some of these are third-party grants, and although we give them the monies and we have a representative, a council member that sits on there, that council member doesn't even always get a vote. They're there to listen, bring back the information back to council, and vice versa. So although we do fund them, we don't control them. We don't control the day-to-day that is done by the committee.
Neither is the art gallery. And as for are we partnering with pride? No, actually, this year and the last three years, no one from pride has even come talk to us, so we haven't done anything for it. However, I will continue to support that for the same reasons that evolved since...
Is there a local pride community?
There is local gay people who have been involved with the Moose Jaw Pride that has come forward.
But no pride community in Estevan?
There's no formal organization that I've ever been made aware of.
I couldn't find any evidence of one either, so I'm just wondering why there's such a thing in this. I have to... I'll just clarify a few things because I sense some hostility from the city indicating how can, you know, some comments of how did we hate people we've never met and such thing. I don't... I didn't intend... I don't think city... I perhaps didn't read or listen to my statements too clearly, but I didn't indicate anywhere in here that we had any form of hate to these people. I in fact stated that the interest of our group is we fully support inclusivity of the pride-type community. So I'm not sure. The issue for us is the diversity. Frankly, what goes on in your bedroom is your own personal business. I don't talk publicly about my sexuality, and I don't want to hear about other people telling me about their sexuality, and I certainly don't want the minors of our community being groomed in this fashion with this kind of language. And that is the crux of the issue. Frankly, you know, the world... There's a dichotomy here. At the core of this issue, to me, there's a dichotomy here between a heterosexual perspective of your sexuality and then the other ones that are embraced by the LGBT community. Okay? And we're going to disagree on that, and we just have to... We have to simply disagree on that matter. But I don't think either group should start publicly expressing their morals to the minors of our community in attempts to try to sway their future decisions in life. That's privileged territory that falls under the auspices of their parents. That's what this is about. This isn't about any kind of attacking people or want to see them degraded. That is not our view at all. There is not one member of our group that holds any hostility or wants to see any person that identifies themselves as a pride member to live any less of a life than they do in this community. In fact, we want to see them. Our group... One of the focuses of our group is standing up for the charter rights, and that's enshrouded. Their rights are enshrouded by the charter.
Okay, Miles. What some cities have done where there's been a conflict, and you know, it's something council can give due consideration, and I know the decision probably won't be made tonight, but what some communities have done where there's issues and conflict between different organizations, not necessarily even these two, but others in the past, they have come out and said simply they will not fly any other flags but Indigenous, the city, the provincial, and the federal, and that is it. So that is something that, you know, again, every council has that right to make those type of decisions, but I know that's what some communities have done because they don't want the conflict within the community. Go ahead, Counselor Ford.
Sorry, I still had the floor, and I'm actually still interested in finishing my first statement because Miles cut me off.
Sorry, Travis.
So I'm going to go back to my first statement that I hadn't quite finished there. Just in terms of why this doesn't fit and why gay pride does, gay pride is nationally recognized. It is a federal event. We have the right to follow that. This is not. This isn't recognized anywhere except for here. And my last statement I'll make, I had the chance to ask my gay uncles what their thoughts on this were, and they still get glares when they walk down the street trying to hold hands, and my wife and I don't, and that is why pride matters, and that's why I'll continue to support it.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ford.
Thanks, your worship. Just a note to you, I will absolutely not consider putting a ban on flags. I don't believe that's right. I believe that we have a flag policy for a reason, and our flag policy does outline the things that we can and cannot hang in our city, which is exactly what it did. Our policy worked in this instance, in my opinion. Just another thing to note, you keep mentioning the word diversity as if it's this terrible buzzword. In my world, in the dictionary's world, diversity is the practice or quality of including or involving people from a range of different social and ethnic backgrounds. In our world, that's all that means to me. Diversity is not a scary buzzword. Diversity is not something that we are tricking people into. It is just trying to include everybody because there are lots of different people in this world. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ford. Counselor Cernik, I apologize, you're in behind the crowd. I don't know if you had your hand up. Would you like to weigh in at all?
Yeah, this one's the most... Obviously, I would tell it's there tonight. I hate the hostility I'm hearing online, but I too, I kind of would go along with what the worship was saying too. When I read our policy, it comes over my understanding that we probably shouldn't be flying like anybody's flags. I'm not against any organization or any people, but when something creates division like the one policy, certainly don't have it right in front of me, the one line, that's what I get, and that's what this is all causing. It's too bad. So, but anyways, that's all I'll say.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cernik. Miles, did you have any closing comments?
I guess my question is, I'm not sure then, does council actively consider it's okay to fly the pride flag? So you would? How many people in the room find the pride flag divisive and contentious?
Well, we see all of your group, Miles, yeah, have... Or most of you have your hands up.
And that's my... And I'll also make the comment, your worship, that that's the opinion I find of the general population on the street from my experiences in life. And also, I would like to just make a final comment that Councilwoman Ford, I disagree of your characterization of what the word diversity means, because that is not the definition that I see from when I read all the pride sites that I've perused in the last 48 hours. They all tend to predominantly mean sexual diversity and diversity of... along the transgender lines, which is outside the scope of this topic of this meeting. So I emphatically disagree with your characterization of what the word diversity means. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Miles, and thank your group for coming this evening, and we'll move on with the business at hand. So next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from the Estevan Wolves, Siskota baseball playoff events permit request. What's the wish of council on this? Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second, or Counselor Ford? Any questions, comments?
I'd like to speak in support of that. This tournament for many years has held at Canosi Lake, and in the last few years, they've been able to bring it to Estevan, and with the support of the community, I think it'll continue to be here. We have great facilities, and it's a great organization, so I would like to just say that I think they're worth supporting.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? Saying none, ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from Estevan Downtown Business Association, the event permit for Street Dance for July 22. Counselor Vroba?
Acceptance and approval, your worship, because last year, I believe this was a great time and...
I'm in full conflict, ladies. Sorry. Your last one was...
Okay, look at that man go.
TV running.
Wow, he's in some kind of shape.
So now that he's left the building...
Just excuse me, Counselor Vroba. Let it be noted that Counselor Frank has left the council chambers, please. Go ahead, please.
Acceptance and approval. I think it's a great thing for the DBA to host, and I think last year it was very well-attended. There was no trouble at all, so I think it's a great idea to host it again, and I also think it's another great thing that the Downtown Business Association and Woodlawn Park were able to find different dates. So the Woodlawn Park one, I believe, is being held in August, sorry, and so it'll be good if everyone can support both.
That's right. I agree, it's a great event. Do we have a second, or Counselor Ford?
I'll second it, and I have a question for Melissa as well.
Certainly, please go ahead.
Melissa, if we were to want to buy tickets for this, where could we actually go and buy them, and do we have to buy them in advance?
There's two options. I have a...
Sorry, I'm making you come to the front.
It's okay. Sorry about that. There are two options. Currently, we have tickets on sale at Henderson Drugs, and then you can also purchase them at the door. There is a $10 difference per ticket because we're trying to sell as many advance tickets as we possibly can. So right now, you can purchase an advance ticket at $25, and then you can purchase a ticket at the door for $35. All right, thank you.
Let it be noted, that was Melissa Dietz from Lemon Wedge Marketing Incorporated.
I guess I should have said that, but yes. And we may expand selling tickets at a few more DBA locations, but currently you can purchase them at Henderson Drugs.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Any further questions or comments? Ready for the question, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Trudy, would you please allow Counselor Frank back in, and maybe he can slow down coming in? I don't want him to fall. Oh, there he is. He's coming in the other door. He heard me.
Musical doors are on camera. I'm not going to run again. That was enough running.
Okay, let it be noted, Counselor Frank has re-entered the council chambers. Okay, next, we have from the Hawks Bay Block Party Request, Events Permit. Writing, "On behalf of Hawks Bay, this past Friday, representatives from each of the nine houses in Hawks Bay met to discuss the potential of a block party in Hawks Bay this summer. It was agreed upon by all members of the Bay to request city permission to close Hawks Bay to vehicle traffic from 3:00 PM August 19 until 11:00 PM August 19 to allow for a block party. Our plan is for the following: Set up one or two bouncy castles on the street or in someone's front yard; Live band playing from 6 till 10. Band will play in a 40-foot trailer, which we would like to place across the street in a manner that still allows emergency..." vehicle access. Friendly, a family-friendly atmosphere with up to 200 total guests. Each resident will be allowed to invite guests. I take it that Council Josh will be invited?" Okay. "The party will be open to invited guests wholly. Two porta-potties will be rented. A non-sale permit will be applied for through SLGA to allow alcohol consumption by adults, and place barriers at the entrance to the Bay, as well as signage indicating a private gathering." So what's the wish of council on this? Counselor Wollizer.
Thank you, Your Worship. Acceptance and approval, and I'd like to thank you for the thought that went into this. This is an initiative that we would love to see ruled out citywide. People really need the ability to gather post-COVID, and you've laid out for us exactly what we would want to see from other members of the community too.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wollizer. Go ahead, Councilor Clark.
I'll second that.
You're seconding that. Thank you. And I just have one other request. Thank you, City Clerk, for bringing that to my attention. We would like to request that the city allow us to borrow those wooden barriers to close off Hawks Bay during vehicular traffic during the course of the event. And also, we would like to borrow up to 10 wooden picnic tables from the city if they're available, and I'm sure, Josh, you would make sure that those are returned. Okay. So can we include that to the individual that made the motion, Counselor Wollizer, and the second or... Councilor Clark?
Ending approval from city management to make sure that we have staff and equipment those days.
Okay. Thank you. And Counselor Clark, you okay?
I'm not sure if we have them because it used to be the Exhibition Association that had them.
Yeah, if available, and I guess we can talk to city manager about that. Would you know, city manager?
I don't know off the top of my head. I do know that when the DBA does their dance, we do have some city tables. No, we don't. They're all exhibition?
We have city tables, but then we get all the picnic tables from the Estevan Exhibition.
So I will talk to Parks Department and just make sure what it is, and if we need to talk to the exhibition, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Roba.
I just whispered to city manager, they do rent them, the Estevan Exhibition. I don't think it's for a very high fee, so I mean, if they're not city property, then I'm sure that if you contact them, they would be willing to rent them to you.
Thank you, Councilor Roba. Any further questions or comments? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I also just want to basically say what Counselor Wollizer said. This is a great idea. I mean, we've talked about this, and we kind of put this idea in place a couple of years ago when we were talking about how to, you know, create better communities within the city. So I do appreciate Hawks Bay taking this initiative and just putting in this great amount of work. It's a lot of planning to host a party, but to get us to be on board with it, it's as simple as a letter like this. So I do appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Ford. Okay. Any further questions, comments? If not, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. There you go, Josh. "It helps with your powerful persona here this evening. It totally swung council over to your way."
Can I say that, please?
Okay. City Manager.
Thank you, Worship. Josh, in your discussion with SLGA, did they need a liquor approval permit for drinking on the roadway there that would have to be separate other than the normal approval?
We wanted to get this approval first, so I think the letter says we will apply for a permit through SLGA, and so that's where we're at right now. Backup option, if SLGA doesn't approve that, would be to get service and then have to have bartenders and people with the proper servant rate course and that kind of stuff.
Just to add to the motion, we might want to, if we're going to allow that on public street, we should do that application now because SLGA needs approval from the city if you are going to go for that permit because that roadway would be public roadway.
That's a good point. Can we ask the Counselor Wollizer who made the motion and Counselor Clark who seconded it? That's okay. Okay. Thank you both for that.
I wrote it as an event's permit.
What was that?
I wrote it as...
Oh, thank you, City Clerk. See, she's already ahead of the game. Okay, so are we ready? All in favor? Done? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, under Original Communications Delegations and Petitions, we have... You might as well sit in the hot seat, my friend. We have from the Estevan Bruins, Request, Sportsman's Dinner Rental Relief. I'll just quickly read this off. To the Mayor of City Council, we're writing today to ask for a reduction in the rental fees for our Sportsman's Dinner that was held in the Curling Rink on May 25th. This event is our largest fundraiser throughout the year for our team. It plays an important role in allowing us to run a highly respected junior A hockey program. To help us maximize our fundraising efforts, we are kindly asking that the city of Estevan waives the equipment rental portion of the invoice in the amount of $1,889. Now, that's roughly half, right, Josh?
That's correct, yes. So I think the other portion is the facility rental.
Yes.
And we're asking to waive the equipment rental, chairs and tables essentially, I think, is what that breaks down to.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. The city of Estevan has been an important partner with the Estevan Bruins, and we thank you for any support you may be able to provide. Our apologies for not having this letter to council prior to the event as we weren't aware at the time that the May 23 meeting of council had been canceled. So thank you for that, Josh. What's the wish of council? Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks again for hosting that event. It's always great to have these big events into the community. I'm certainly not against your request. The one before I had seen this, I knew this would be coming, and one thought I had had is this is an event I think we had intended to buy a table for, and unfortunately, none of us were. We were all away that week. I think most of us had a conference, so we weren't able to buy a table. So at the very least, because we would have normally contributed that amount, that was an amount I had in mind, although I don't think your request is unreasonable either. So I would probably support either of those options. I'm sure you prefer the larger of the two, but I'll hear what the rest of council says.
So is that going to be Counselor Frank, your motion?
If I have to make the motion so that everybody else can speak, I'm actually quite okay with the $1,889. I think the Bruins are a wonderful organization in our community, and they do a lot. This was an event, unfortunately, none of us were able to attend, but I think we can still support. We do already give a discounted rate on nonprofits using it, but in this particular situation, I'm okay with supporting the $1,889 as a one-time donation to Estevan Bruins.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Roba.
Thank you, Worship. I agree. We probably would have been there, could have been there, or couldn't have been there, but I'm okay with your motion. I think we do have a lot of nonprofits who do come and ask for this kind of thing, so I appreciate that you're not asking for the rental and the actual labor it took to set it up. So that was good. So I would actually second your motion.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Roba, for that. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Look at that, Josh. You're batting a thousand. You and Lemon Wedge Group, you guys got stroke, I'm telling you. Okay, next, under Original Communications Delegations and Petitions, we have the GFL Cart Report for May. What's the wish of council on that? Thank you, Counselor Wollizer.
Acceptance and approval.
Thank you. Have we got a second or... Thank you, Counselor Ford. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, next, under Written. You guys are more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but... Oh, we do understand. You got meetings, right? Okay, thanks. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee Meeting Minutes of May 23rd. Could we have a motion, please, to accept those? Counselor Clark?
I'll make that motion, Your Worship.
Okay. Thank you. Have we got a second or... Thank you, Counselor Ford. Any comments you'd like to make, Counselor Clark?
There's a meeting tomorrow, and Counselor Sernick's requested me to take a look at the road north of town and pass the bypass, so I will be checking that out and relaying any concerns to that.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay. Any further questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have the Estevan Humane Society Minutes of May 20th. This looks like a government document. There's a lot of redaction in here, but I'm sure it's all good redacting. So do we have a motion to accept this? Counselor Wollizer? Thank you. Have we got a second or... Counselor Frank, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Counselor Wollizer.
Thank you, Your Worship. I am a member on this board, and I'm just really glad that they listened to me when I said, "Please submit your minutes and redact what you'd like to redact." So I can assure you that in the financials, it is the protection of their anonymous donors that they are taking out of the minutes for us. Also, just important for the community to know that they are over capacity at all times. So their ability to provide care for 51 cats and 11 dogs is not because their physical building holds that number of animals. It's that members of our community have opened up their homes to foster these animals some more safe until they can have a permanent place to go. So there's always lots going on. They're very active in the community, and if you're interested, you can follow their Facebook page for updates on upcoming events.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wollizer, for that clarification, and thank you for the clarification on the redaction as well. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you so much. Moving forward, under Executive Reports, we have from the City Treasurer, the Waste Collection Recycling Tender Report. I'll quickly go over that. The city's current contract for residential solid waste and eligible recyclables collection services is expiring the end of the month, June 30th of '23. A request for proposal was submitted on Sask tenders. We received three phone, email inquiries, but only one actual tender came in from GFL Environmental Incorporated, which is summarized below. Monthly charge for bi-weekly residential curbside recycling, $11,297. Monthly charge for weekly residential waste collection, $12,064.84. Monthly unit charge for citywide litter containers waste collection, $3.56. Dump service for three-yard trash bins, $15. Dump service for four-yard trash bins, $20. Dump service for six-yard trash bins, $30. Container availability of 30-yard trash bins, $2. Delivery of 30-yard trash bins, $85. Dump and return of 30-yard trash bins, $150. Monthly charge for service of Sixth Street Recycle Depot, $6,000. Fuel charge is a variable rate based on the monthly national diesel rate recommendation. For the last five years, the city of Estevan has utilized the services of GFL for household garbage and recycling pickup. GFL also manages a recycling depot on Sixth Street and empties smaller brown public bins located throughout the city. The city has had no significant issues with the service provided by GFL over the last five years. They've done a great job. They have provided an account manager that is willing to rectify any issues that may occur. The recommendation would be to accept the proposal presented by GFL Environmental Incorporated. As stated in the contract agreement, this proposal will be valid for five years, July 1st, '23 to June 30th of 2028. So what's the wish of Counselor Ford?
Your Worship, I just have a question to the City Treasurer, just so I have it clear in my head. This five-year contract, this is the rate that's set for the next five years, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make the motion to accept this. Garbage is a hot topic right now. Prices only seem to be going up, and as we're looking for new ways to, new places to put garbage, I think this is going to be reasonable, and since we had no other tenders, I think we have to accept it.
Yeah, absolutely. Counselor Ford, thank you. I think it's a good deal for the city. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks to GFL for attending to this evening. I'll second it. Obviously, we have no other tenders, so that's an easy option, but I'm also grateful. I think GFL's been very good to our community. They employ a lot of people here. They have operations here. And as is noted in the report, we've had no significant issues and have been able to rectify any smaller issues that are had with individuals. So I think the service is great, so let's keep going with it.
Okay. Super. Thank you for that. Counselor Wollizer.
City Manager, can you speak to how this contract is tied to the rate that citizens see on their water bill every second month?
Thank you, Counselor Wollizer. They're totally independent, so this is brought to council. We do our utility bylaw rates that come every year, so we can have that discussion at that time. There is nuance on what is going to, funding of those rates that goes to landfill for the needed upgrades that are going there compared to what we charge for this. So I think that's a prudent conversation to have at the utility rate bylaw when council sets up.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. And I think it's great we will be able to maintain the rates for five years. I mean, that's awesome. Counselor Roba?
Thank you, Worship, and thank you to GFL because honestly, we've had some great service. I was just recently in another community, and I won't say the name, but I had put some recyclables and garbage into her cart, and she almost had a bird because the lid was just a little bit up. And I go, "What?" And she said, "In her community, they won't pick it up if it's even a little bit up, and they'll actually take the time to get their truck and leave a note to remind people not to." And so whereas in our community, I've actually had to call before because we maybe got missed, or maybe everything didn't come out, and your truck has come back. So thank you for the good customer service, and I do encourage people to use recyclable and not have so much garbage, but sometimes happens to us.
Yes, we have good waste removal people. Unlike some communities, they're pretty angry. I'm not sure why, but anyway, we're happy to have your service. So any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie. Okay. Thank you so much, guys, for coming, and you too are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the evening, but we do understand. What was that?
He said, "We've seen enough."
Okay, thanks. At first, I thought, "I know these two. Are they part of this group?" But, okay.
I'm just trying to get out of the... Pictures of me and Amy.
We'll redact it. We'll redact it. Okay. Okay. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have from the City Treasurer, the Affinity Score Clock Costing Report. So council requested a final accounting be provided regarding the Centennial Cup Legacy Project for the new score clock at Affinity. City of Estevan hosted the Centennial Cup in May of '22. The Centennial Cup Committee wanted to use the profit from hosting this tournament to go towards a new score clock for Affinity Place. This was their chosen legacy project. Cost of the clock, $401,239.68 less Centennial Cup Committee profit, $234,418.20 less Kingston Midstream Richardson's Foundation donation, $70,000, less food and beverage profit from May 18th to 29th, which covered the Centennial Cup week, $81,071.34. Net cost to the city recapital asset for Affinity Place, $15,750.14. Conclusion, the net cost to the city of $15,750.14 resulted in the acquisition of a valuable capital asset. Hosting of the Centennial Cup provided a huge economic spinoff for the city as a whole and was overall a great success. Recommendation that the financial report be accepted as presented and that any concerns or questions are forwarded to the City Treasurer. So thank you, City Treasurer. We'll open the floor for council. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just wonder with the old clock, if it's still, if we're actively trying to sell it, and if not, if there is nobody wanting to buy it, that I think we should perhaps look at putting it in that auction. I think that auction is getting a, it's getting views from beyond the province and whatever, but I hate to see it sit down in a storage unit for years and years. But I think if we need to get down to, if somebody wants it, we need to get it sold and not just keep it.
Sure. That's a good idea, Counselor Clark. We were initially told by the clock people that they thought it wouldn't be a problem, that they could get rid of us, get rid of the clock for us. Unfortunately, that did not happen, and you're right. The old clock that we sold this year at the auction sale had been in the fire hall, well, since the other one got put in, so what, eight, nine years? And we got a little bit for it, but you make a good point. If we put it in right away next year, we'll probably get the top value that it's worth, and it does cover a large area, so that's probably a good comment. Okay. Counselor Wollizer?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you to the City Treasurer for preparing this report. I think a common phrase heard out in the community is, "How much money did the city make at food and beverages and then whatever they would like to see that money spent on?" So to be able to show that a profit was made, but it was directly reinvested into Affinity Place is wonderful for the community to see. into Affinity Place is wonderful for the community to see, but also important as we're moving into the fall for all of our community groups to realize it's not a small, simple piece of technology, that
Absolutely.
the reason that we have processes and procedures around it is because the taxpayers of Estevan have made a considerable investment in bringing this, and we want to use it for many years to come.
Absolutely. Thank you councillor Waliser, and it's a great addition to Affinity Place. Councillor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship, and yourself, and myself and councillor Clark had the great chance to see it operational this weekend at Lobster Fest, and it had a lot of, a lot of people pretty excited. It looks amazing, so it is a great asset. Grind, you know, we can all grind our teeth that it was not the freest thing in the world, but it, it did end up balancing out after all of the great benefits from Centennial Cup, and, and it's going to be a great asset, and it's nice to see that Affinity Place can continue to be maintained and updated so that it's the, the incredible hockey facility we've wanted for, and will have for many years to come. So I guess just acceptance and approval on this.
Absolutely, thank you. So you'll make that motion?
I'll make a motion for acceptance and approval.
Thank you. Have we got a seconder? Okay, I'll go with councillor Waliser, councillor Ford. You've been doing a lot of work over there tonight.
I do my work, yes.
Yes, you are. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports, we have from the wastewater treatment plant, or the water treatment plant, I'm sorry, manager, water quality report for April. And as you're all aware, after having gone over everything, it's great. There are no issues, so we're very happy with that. I'd like to thank our manager for a job well done and keeping all of the issues to a minimum. So could we have a motion, please, to accept that report? Thank you, councillor Clark. Seconded by councillor Waliser, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Okay, next, we have, again, from the water treatment plant manager, the report for May. And there again, that looks great. So could we have a motion for that, please? Thank you councillor Frank. Seconded by councillor Ford, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, next, but not least, from the fire chief, we have the reports for April. Concerned for April and for May. First of all, we'll do April. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the fire chief report for April? Thank you councillor Waliser. Seconded by councillor Groba, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? Ready for the, oh, I'm sorry, councillor Grob?
I just snuck my hand in there because I noticed on Discover Estevan, they did a little write-up, basically stating how much work the fire department did this past weekend with the call-outs. And I noticed I was having lunch at the tower this afternoon on their patio, which was fantastic. The fire truck was also going out again today, so I mean, kudos to all of them. They are a volunteer fire department, and thank you to all the businesses that give time for them to leave their jobs, because when you read that article in the paper and then on your lunch break, you see them going out again, you realize just exactly how hard working these volunteers are. So thank you.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Thank you councillor Groba, and we can't thank our volunteers enough. And along with that, all of our local businesses, without their support, it just simply wouldn't be possible. So yeah, we are, we're very fortunate for that. Thank you. So ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Now, could we have a motion, please, to accept the fire chief report for May? And I'm sorry councillor Sernick, I, I've been ignoring you, so I'll let you make the motion if you want to make this, so we can see on paper that you were here today. Thank you. Okay, so councillor Sernick made the motion. Have we got a seconder? Thank you councillor Clark. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under introduction of bylaws, we have none this evening. Public hearings and reports, we have none this evening. Giving notice, no notices this evening. Motions from committee, we have none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, we have bylaw 2023-2074, amending the fire bylaw to allow fireworks in our community, second and third reading. So we will open the floor for second reading of bylaw 2023-2074, a bylaw in the City of Estevan to amend, bylaw 2004-1666, being a bylaw of the City of Estevan to provide for sale of consumer low-hazard fireworks from a commercial business. Could we have that motion, please? Thank you councillor Ford. Seconded by councillor Clark. At this point, we'll open the floor for any questions, comments that you may have. Seeing none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, I will ask for third reading and adoption for, of use for bylaw 2023-2074, a bylaw in the City of Estevan to amend bylaw 2004-1666, being a bylaw of the City of Estevan to provide for sale of consumer low-hazard fireworks from a commercial business. Okay, thank you councillor Waliser. Seconded by councillor Frank, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you very much. Next, inquiries. Councillor Groba?
None, Your Worship.
None? Wow, councillor Groba, I'm at a loss for words. Usually, you have something to say, but thank you.
I do, but I'm going to wait for next meeting.
Okay, well, I, I can appreciate that. Thank you. Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Worship. Certainly was a great weekend with the, the successful Lobster Fest and the fundraiser at the Legion for the Tessier family. Just want to say also, I was able to attend a couple of grand openings, which is great to see that a couple of companies, Fixers Hairdressing Salon and Sudzona had a new owner, that are showing some confidence in our community at a time when sometimes people don't, but congratulations to them for, for being part of our community, and I, I think that, that's a good sign. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you councillor Clark. Thank you for attending the hair salon. Unfortunately, I was out of town. Thank you so much for attending on my behalf. Thank you councillor Frank for attending the liquor board. By the way, we're supposed to divide that liquor they gave you. Just saying. Councillor Clark?
Those scissors aren't sharp enough to cut a hair for a
Oh, they're not? Okay. Well, thank you for trying, anyway. But yeah, it's great to see the expanding businesses in our community. It's fantastic. Thank you for that. Councillor Waliser?
Thank you, Your Worship. We had quite a few people come as a delegation tonight, and if that enthusiasm from the community continues, we are taking a bit of a summer vacation. So council's only meeting twice this summer, once on July 17th and once on August 22nd. So if people would like to present to council, they need to make sure that they've double-checked their dates and had everything submitted in time.
Good point. Thank you councillor Waliser. Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I had the opportunity to attend the museum last week on National Indigenous Peoples' Day. We unveiled a new Red River cart. If anybody, we've talked about it a number of times here at council. It is now a permanent display at the museum, so if anybody would like to go and learn about Métis history and see some, some new things at the museum, it's open. There's got, they've got their summer programming. There's a lot going on there this year.
Thank you for that councillor Ford. I was able to attend that. It was great for me to be in the audience instead of in the shooting range at the front, so that was kind of a nice thing. I appreciated that. And that was your idea to get that cart, so thank you for bringing that to council. And all of you ladies had great things to say, and it's going to be a great addition to our community. Councillor Sernick, I thought, I bet you thought I was going to miss you, but I didn't. What would you like to say?
I wondered. My head's probably the size of the wall there.
I wasn't going to make that comment.
That's where I am, up in Saskatchewan, at the seventh First Nations Power Authority Conference. It was a good day. Obviously, talked about transition again, and Guy Lownchild, the president, got to meet him. He's actually from White Bear, so he knows all about, all about Estevan, and he was actually grateful to see someone representing from southeast Saskatchewan and to Estevan, and got to say hi to Rupe in there, the president of SASS Power. Don Morgan was in the house, and there was, there was many others, but it was good, and there's so many things, I could go on and on. Nuclear, SMR, and Estevan were brought up today a couple of times. And, but the most important thing of the day is, you know, there's a strong message coming from indigenous groups that any energy project built in the future will need consent from the indigenous groups of the area, so sounds reasonable, and that's the future.
Yep, good point. Thank you councillor Sernick, and thank you for requesting to go to that. We appreciate the fact that we had a presence there, so thank you very much for attending. Councillor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. If Shelley has none, I'll have fours tonight, so I'm just making up four, that's all. No, I, the two are just, yes, I also had the chance to attend Fixers, Marsha Guy's New Business, and as well as the, the LB, which is our new liquor store, taking over most of the space where the old SLGA was. It was a great opening. They did have some samples. I actually didn't even have a chance to partake because I was so worn out from carrying giant scissors around town, so I, I just went straight home. What a, what a wasted opportunity that was. So, but yeah, I too am grateful to see some confidence in the community. I had two requests from citizens. One, I had already passed along to city manager and, and has gone through part, or the roads department was just in regards to the 1600 block of Second Street, just the back alley, receiving a lot of the homeowners there because the backside of that is two large condo buildings. This is where the EJH used to be. There's a lot of traffic through that back alley, and those homeowners are complaining a little bit about dust into the, into their yards. Our city manager, or our roads and drainage manager got back to us and just said, the opposite problem of dust control is then that ends up going down into the parcade below. So just something that we can maybe have some thought a little bit about, if anybody has any creative solutions. I think we'd like to find something that we can try to make everybody happy there.
Okay, thank you councillor Frank. We'll probably pass that through the good offices of the city manager to the appropriate manager.
For sure, absolutely. And then the last one was just in regards to our walking trails. I just had somebody asking about a map. I think we have a digital map now. They were looking specifically for a paper map. They're an older couple and weren't going to be using an app, so just, I know that's been a kind of a pet project, and we've had a little bit of turnover in staff just with, with our parks manager leaving, so I'm sure that's been a little bit of a delay, but hoping that we can get something going on that soon because we are, got a couple of years out now, so.
Yeah, and that is a, a good idea, good suggestion. We can revisit that. We should have a little map for people, you know, when they pick up their poop bags for the dogs. They could maybe have a complete map, so it's a win-win. Get a bag, get a map, all for the same free price as councillor Sernick.
This particular couple was looking at the tourism booth, which is also good, but anywhere we can put them is great. I think people, we could put the map on the poop bags, Your Worship, and then
I guess we could.
Then maybe they'd use the poop bags. I'm just going to say, we might be on to something here, Your Worship. This might be
I hope that's not double jeopardy, but yeah.
This might be a great solution. Anything that works, so, and that's all from me for this evening. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Seeing no further hands up, we will move into committee. So do we have a motion to adjourn and move into committee? Thank you councillor Groba. Seconded by councillor Clark, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you so much, and good evening. We stand closed.